Before we start the meeting, we'll do a quick roll call for those who are online. Please turn on your mics, cameras on. I call them in. Trusty Powell, are you there? Trusty Powell? Trusty Powell's there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Trusty Kennedy?
I'm here.
Thank you. Trusty Ovanchana?
I'm here.
Thank you. Trusty Kelly? Trusty Kelly? Trusty, Vice Chair Murphy? Vice Chair Murphy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Trusty Adelie?
I'm here.
Thank you. Trusty Hannah?
I'm here.
And Trusty Purasam?
I'm here.
Thank you. Trusty, well, okay, you have all, how's the audio out there? Is it clear, crisp?
Yeah, crystal clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's start the meeting. Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Special Board Meeting of the Hallen Catholic District School Board on Thursday, September 11, 2025. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will also be posted on the board's website. Trustees, in order to be recognized, please use the hand up feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. And for trustees in the boardroom, here's a reminder, as you know, we have a new microphone system in the boardroom and for those here. So we no longer need to use the microphones, stations and printers. Instead, the microphone system partners will pick up the voice that I will speak during the meeting. You will still need to use a hand up feature in Teams to be placed in queue. Unless prompted by myself, please refrain from speaking when it's not your time to speak. Call to order, item number, item 1.1, Landing Management, Opening Prayer, The Our Father and National Anthem. And our staff, please start us off with the Landing Management.
Halton, as we know it today-
Is rich in the history and modern traditions-
Of many First Nations and the Métis-
From the lands of the Anishinaabe-
To the Atawandaran-
The Haudenosaunee-
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding me greatly-
Are steeped in Indigenous history-
As we gather today on these treaty land-
Our Catholic social teachings-
Call us in solidarity-
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters-
So honor and respect-
The four directions-
Lands-
Waters-
Plants-
Enimos-
And ancestors-
That walked before us-
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist-
Gifted to us by our Creator God-
We acknowledge and thank-
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation-
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Tractor Klein, please will you start us off with the opening prayer, The Our Father and the National Anthem?
Thank you, Chair, and welcome everyone this evening. We have every year a Catholic Education Week that takes place in the month of May. And on those occasions, we have themes for the year itself. The Education Week, Catholic Education Week this year is as a theme called Pilgrims of Hope on the Path to Holiness. And the related subthemes come from a pastoral letter to young people by the bishops of Canada nearly three years ago. I'll quote from that briefly because the messages in that letter to our youth, Catholic youth in Canada, reflect, are reflected in the themes of Catholic Education Week this coming year. "God loves you no matter what is happening in your life. You are at all times loved by a God who is with you always and wants you to flourish and be happy." "Christ saves you out of love for all humanity. Christ offered His life for everyone, including young people." "The Holy Spirit lives in you. The Spirit of the risen Christ is alive in you and seeks to guide you in all that you do." So there's a wonderful and deep and broad array of resources for educators in our Catholic schools and it actually starts now. So there's a whole series of events and prayers and activities that lead up to Catholic Education Week. And this week they have a series of prayers for each day that do reflect the themes as you go through the week. So what I'd like to do is pray the prayer that is for elementary schools. So it will be through sort of the vantage point of a younger child on Thursday. So in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Loving God, thank you for this new day, for the gift of our Catholic school. You have sent the Holy Spirit to live in our hearts, to help us grow in faith, love, and hope. This year, we are pilgrims of hope, walking with you on the path to holiness. Help us to be kind, generous, and full of joy as we learn and play. Show us how to be more like Jesus in everything we do today. Holy Spirit, shine in our hearts and guide our steps. And we ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Our Father-
Werest in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it should be. You give us to stay in bed. You give us our daily passes. As we forgive all those trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation. But for us, we give. Amen. Thank you, Tractor Klein. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Can you have the agenda, please? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Looking for removal, please. Trusty Carabella moves. Looking for a second order?
I'm second.
Trusty Agnew, seconds. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trusty Carabella?
In favor.
Trusty Powell?
Favor.
Thank you. Trusty Kennedy?
In favor.
Trusty Agnew?
In favor.
Trusty Ovanchana?
In favor.
Trusty Kelly? Trusty Kelly? Trusty Saunders? Trusty Vice Chair Murphy?
In favor.
Trusty Adelie? Trusty Adelie?
In favor.
Thank you. Trusty Hannah?
In favor.
Trusty Purasam?
In favor.
If seven in favor, none opposed, no abstention, motion carried, the agenda is approved. For student trustees online, you did not keep your cameras on, but it's okay to turn it on when you want or when you want to speak. Okay, so it's not necessary to keep it on, so it's fine. Our next order of business is declarations of conflicts of interest, of any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight. Online. Any conflicts? Say no. We shall move on to our next order of business, which is information items. Item number four, 4.1, trustee resignation. And we have that item on the screen, please. Thank you. Trustees, as you have been made aware, Vice Chair Murphy has submitted her resignation as the trustee of the Hallen Catholic District School Board effective September 16, 2025. This, this report, this information item is in your package and it's a public record document. I'm presenting this item at a special board meeting for the following reasons. Trusty Murphy is an elected representative and has the duty to let all trustees and the public know that trustee Murphy intends, has submitted a letter of resignation. We also have one more meeting in a month, so the resignation letter is expected dated 16th of this month. Having a special board meeting today gives trustee Murphy the opportunity to give us and to speak to trustees' other experiences in the board. We also start conversations at the next board meeting. How to proceed within the confines of the Education Act and that clear the next board meeting. Besides that, stuff is a lot of work to do, that the client is a lot of work to do and a lot of research. We have not had a resignation in 16 years at this board. So that's been really good. And tonight, basically, trustees, it's too premature to discuss details. This is an information session, we're just presenting this information to trustees. So it gives everybody enough time to go through it, think through it, and then in the next board meeting, we'll have a lot of details. So with this, I would now like to invite trustee Murphy, if you would like to say a few words. Trusty Murphy, you're on the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, I have lots that I'd like to say, but in the interest of time and to keep it brief. I had written a letter, so I will, I will share that by just sort of give a bit of an explanation and of course to extend my gratitude to the board and to everyone I've worked with. So the decision did not come easy to me at all. It was a lot of prayerful consideration and it's due to some personal matters that require my full attention at this time. It has been truly a pleasure to serve our community in this capacity. I'm really, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to work alongside other dedicated trustees, the administration, the staff, the families, and everyone who contributed to my campaign, of course, I extend my gratitude to them. And it's been an honor in this capacity to support Catholic education. I'm very proud of what we have accomplished together and I'm confident that the board will continue to guide students with faith and excellence at the forefront. And I just have a lot of gratitude and respect for everyone that I've worked alongside with and I will miss working with you all. And I sincerely hope that our paths cross frequently in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Murphy. I'll keep my comments for last, but if trustees have any comments or or questions on this process as today, just hand up. Trusty Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to thank trustee Murphy for her generous service as a trustee at Hallen Catholic District School Board. Trusty Murphy, I really valued working with you. You're a dedicated, faithful Catholic focused on Catholic values in education and parental rights. Your insightful questions and comments at the board table and policy meetings will be greatly missed. Your desires and actions to promote and foster Catholic teaching in the schools was evident and will also be greatly missed. You worked towards high academic achievement and educational options to engage the students so they could strive for their best potential. It's actually with sadness that I hear of your resignation. However, I wish you all of God's blessings in your next endeavors. Thank you again, trustee Murphy, for running and being of service to Hallen Catholic District School Board.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trusty Ovanchana?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, and trustee Murphy, I'm sure this decision did not come easy. Definitely, and really, I just wanted to say that we may not have always been on the same side of votes, but you really expressed your opinion with grace and intelligence. So thank you for that and I wish you nothing but health in the future and happiness.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ovanchana. Trusty Saunders?
Yeah, just like I say, trustee Murphy, I enjoyed working with you and I appreciate that you put your name forward to be vice chair and I appreciate your hard work. So thank you and good luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Trusty Agnew?
Yeah, I mean, I just want to echo some of the sentiments that have already been shared, but you know, definitely want to wish you the very best, trustee Murphy. Again, I can't imagine how difficult this is, this decision must have been. You know, you certainly were committed to this role and to the rate pairs and the stakeholders who, you know, elected you with confidence. So wishing you all the very best in what comes next and I hope you're able to sort out some of the things that you need to pay the most attention to right now. And yeah, just wanted to wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Thank you. I'll wind up, I'll wind up this conversation by thanking you. Trusty Murphy, Vice Chair Murphy, on behalf of the Hallen Catholic District School Board of Trustees, I would like to extend sincere repute to you for your dedicated service to this board and for serving as vice chair once a year. Your commitment to Catholic education and your collaborative spirit has been a great, have been of great support in this board. You have faithfully upheld our mission to nurture faithful learning, which has helped us make good decisions in service of all our students, families, and staff. We are grateful for the many hours you have devoted for this role behind the scenes, ensuring that the work remains focused, respectful, and united on the same goals. I want to thank you for your generosity of time for and talent, for example, you have set in our Muslim Catholic community with faith and dedication. We, God, continue to bless you abundantly in your future endeavors. Thank you. So with that, thank you, trustee Murphy, thank you, trustees. If you have any quick questions regarding the agenda for today and this item, we can take that question. Thank you, Trusty Saunders?
Yeah, I wonder if you'll be able to sort of scope out what we want to accomplish today and in the next meeting, what the plan is.
So as I indicated, this is only an information session. This, because the information session has been action item at the next board meeting, where the board of trustees collectively will receive. Trustees cannot approve because trustee Murphy is an elected representative, so we don't need to approve, but we have to receive it as a board. So once the trust, all the trustees receive it, it becomes binding, right? And then the next step would be to direct a client, then it jumps onto direct a client to bring, to kick into motion the Education Act and what the Education Act states about that. There will be a longer discussion with trustees and trustees collectively will make a decision on how to move forward after that. So this is the first step, bring it to the board, making it public, giving everybody time to think. Come to a Tuesday meeting, well prepared, with your questions, thoughts, and then we'll bounce ideas back and forth and then think from there.
So, sorry, so the next meeting will just be developing the plan, the process.
So trustees need to, again, so this is a lot of the board, trustees, and the decision will be made by trustee, how to proceed. There are various options out there, but it's too premature right now to discuss anything. Because out of respect to trustee Murphy and our love for trustee Murphy as a trustee, we can't be discussing that right now. Only once we get to the board, at a regular board meeting, and we accept the resignation, can we start this conversation. So it will be a trusty's move, if I take it. Still too premature at this point in time. Any further questions? Trusty Ovanchana?
Hi, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. So at this point, after this meeting, this is not an in-camera meeting, so this is for public consumption right now, right?
Correct. Absolutely, absolutely correct.
Thank you.
And trustee Carabella?
Yes, you mentioned Chair d'Or, the Education Act. Is it also things within the Municipal Elections Act that speak to vacancies?
Education Act, Section 221, talks to vacancies from, right? 221, correct? Yeah, talks to vacancies. 221 talks to resignation. So this is basically, it's very wide and open. But once the board of trustees decide on the course of action, then it is up to direct a client to take it from there.
I'm sorry, just, yes, are you done? Trusty Carabella, thank you. So again, completely understanding where you're coming from, Chair d'Or, and obviously out of respect for trustee Murphy, who is still here with us at this meeting. But I think just further clarification of what trustee Saunders was asking for my purpose. So next meeting, there will be an agenda item where there'll be an action item where we need to officially receive the resignation. At what point will trustees be provided with additional information on options and maybe, you know, pre-reading? And like, when will we actually, I don't need the details of what, but kind of when can we anticipate that we start to have those planning discussions? I think, I think that's what we're looking for, is just a little bit more clarity around literally what comes next.
Very good question. So at the next board meeting, there will be two action items. The first action item will be to receive. The second action item will be on trustees, how to proceed, of what is in trust. Now that's going to involve a report and that's up to direct a client who will break a report to trustees and will be provided to all trustees before the board meeting, up to direct a client. When can you provide that report to trustees?
I can have it as early as one morning.
So just follow up, Mr. Chair. So it'll be an action item on next, at the next board meeting. So again, I'm anticipating with open pressure that your report will be quite robust. I think we will want to have as much information as possible coming into that, we are going to be expected to make a decision on things because this is obviously unknown territory for all of us and we haven't been through this before. I think it's a little bit unlike a neural action item where, you know, it's been in advance, it's been a notice motion and such. So I think as much as we can have available to us to have, you know, a great conversation, hopefully come out with an action. Because I, again, I don't know this process, so as much information as possible, I think for us to prepare would be helpful.
Well, I think direct a client, provide a report, you said tomorrow morning, but to be subject to the first item getting approved, receiving it. So that's the specifics.
Maybe with that, I, that part I've got down pat. Chair d'Or, no problem. I'm just talking about the next piece that comes. I just want to make sure that we're fully informed and we can make the best decision.
So what we, what we will do is we'll have opportunities for trustees to go into camera if you want. We can discuss in the public session, we can go into camera, we can take as much time as we want, but we want the process to be solid, accurate upon while trustees transparent and transparent possibility. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's good, good, thank you.
So just for clarity, you're not expecting us to pick somebody next week?
Oh, no, no, we, that, that process is, it's a lengthy process. We just can't do anything. As I said, trustees make a decision on how to move forward. There'll be ample opportunity for trustees to discuss onsite, just back and forth, going to camera, come back, talk to people who are, who are on this process. There's several examples around us where similar kind of situations have occurred. And so that could also be discussed some of those items in future. Okay, sounds good. Trustees online? Seeing no other questions, once again, thank you, Vice Chair Murphy, for your service. Thank you so much for all that you have done. Thank you, trustees online. We shall now move on to our next order of business, which is in camera. We do not have to go in camera. Resolutions regarding absentees, we have one trustee who's absent today. May I have a motion to excuse trustee Kelly? Looking for removal, please?
How?
Sorry.
Can I have a question? Sorry, sorry, is trustee Kelly, is this now these new rules where she would have asked for?
So I did send that mail to trustees. This, this is a special board meeting. Okay, so the rules are different for special board meetings, so. So we have motion to excuse trustee Kelly, looking for removal, please?
I can, it's Powell.
Trustee Powell moves. Looking for a second, please?
For the second, Mr. Chair.
Second by trustee Agnew, all in favor?
Favor.
Anybody opposed? Say none. Motion carries, trustee Kelly is excused. We now move on to item number seven, agenda and closing prayer. May I have a motion, Richard? Looking for removal, trustee Saunders? Trustee Carabella, seconds, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Say none. Motion carries. I have the opportunity now to lead us in the prayer. Please join me in the sound of our faith in the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we thank you for being with us in our work this evening, guide us as we return to our families and responsibilities, and keep us always faithful to our mission of serving you, a devout Catholic school board, to Christ our Lord. Amen. Amen. The Father, Son, Holy Spirit, and thanks for the great meeting.
Thank you.